You own farm land at all, please?
No, just eleven acres, it's just garden. Strand used to live there and he used to, his kids used to have cattle. He owned that land behind him too.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. Got your water going already.
I can't think of his name, first name right now.
I do have one.
Yeah, when you're not around, yeah, those names they pop into your head, the weird times of the night.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yeah. Because it will, to me it does, it just bothers me as well as me until I can remember it. Morning Vanessa. And I know everybody still has them, so I just made some more copies again of the sample questions, that's all.
I don't know if we have this one.
I'm not sure, it was the three of them I'd had.
Oh.
I can't remember when.
This, this one is the one that we used when we paired Mitch.
Right.
Which one, draft one?
The single page one. And then the last one was the one that we had, my names beside it, the two page one was the last one. And the other one, I can't remember if that was. When that was, or if that was just some sample ones that we were given by school or something, maybe or something, I'm not sure.
Well, that's the one we used. A lot this last time.
This is, I think, isn't this the one you used last time?
The one that said, four, four, three, two, one.
Yeah, but I had this other one.
Oh, I think that's what we used to.
To pick out, I think with Mitch, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I, I couldn't remember and I found him, so I thought, you know, I'm just putting him in here.
Thank you.
And I did find the ones of questions we cannot answer.
Oh, you did, good.
Yes, yeah, I dug some more into my computer and I found it, so.
Make copies?
I thought I'll, thought I'll give two to everybody, because we should make sure our community person knows too. There you go.
You make copies for everybody?
Yes, I did, yes. Yeah, I made, I made two for everybody, so. And I don't know what. Do you want to lay these over there, hopefully Spencer's coming? Let me make some.
Yeah, I was gonna go with Kelly.
What, why about that?
No, I, I did cancel for this.
Oh, okay.
I canceled because I don't have enough work done.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
Well, I guess we need to get this done, but we're, and I, yesterday, I, I'm wrong with my daughter, but. She had to take her grand, her, her, her daughter to, um, run forks for allergy testing, and she didn't want to do it alone, so.
Oh, true.
I was the driver yesterday.
Then you were a driver for Renee on Monday.
I was the driver for Renee on Monday, which she had to check on her diagnosis, so. The only positive of that is what, than me being the doctor, it was nice to be the driver.
On Tuesday, you were subbing.
On Tuesday, I subbed, yeah, so. I subbed for Cognia, I was the guy that went. When a teacher got called out, I went into that room.
So I thought Cognia always interviewed, like, community people and board people.
And I asked that too, and, and, um, um, Jordy told me that, um, no, that wasn't on their list. I'm surprised by that.
I asked Kelly too, and he said there was nothing on the list like that. And I think there's. I seen him afterwards that day, and then he said something, well, they're changing it then too, it's like now. It'll be once every six years, but on the three year, they'll do like a. Like a smaller version, kind of like an in-between, you know, or whatever, but it'll be every six years will be the full one instead of every five. But they'll do some, I can't remember, it was something they'll do in, in between, like every three years, whether it'll be like all paper or whatever, but. They will do something kind of midterm, they said, is what they were looking at, I guess. They'll find out, I think they, he said something, they told me, I think, a couple of months until we get the. Report or whatever, so, I don't know, I guess we just.
But you thought Spencer should come?
Oh, yeah. Tiny bug in here the last days.
Now we're gonna pick these questions.
Yeah.
But I know too.
Good morning, um, did you get the notice about the meeting this morning? I think, I think Zane sent it out Monday. Oh, okay, okay. Oh, okay, okay, well, what we're doing is we're, we're picking out questions, so do you mind if we pick out your questions then? Okay. Oh, so I won't be there, okay. Oh, oh, I see, okay.
Sure.
Okay, okay, sure, no, no problem. Okay, all right, we will pick your questions and I'll get them to you. Okay, okay, you bet, bye-bye. Kind of forgot, he said wouldn't have been able to anyway, because I guess his wife, evidently his wife had back surgery, so he's alone, alone with the kids. Even through next week, so he's getting it all figured out for next week to make sure he's here for interviews. So, he said that, no, he trusts us, we'll pick his, we'll pick questions.
Yeah, because we'll talk about, all right, so I'm gonna call me to order, now this will be a, a special meeting, um, for April seventeenth. Call in order here at seven or two, um, the only thing we're gonna talk about today is superintendent's search, but more specifically. Um, what we're, our goal today is to pick out the questions, um, because I have a couple of things been done, I want to ask first. Um, so, would you give the questions to the superintendent, the candidates in advance, correct?
I.
I think we did that last time too.
Yeah, we did for the principals, and I think we did for, I think that's why after, Jones did wanted this, and I think they had it.
I kind of, I kind of think so, but I'm not, I don't know, in retrospect, I'm not sure if I like that.
Well, in, in my opinion, um, I don't think we'd be anything wrong with a, a couple that come off the floor, but I don't think, I think maybe we should have a format, maybe, but, I don't know, what do you guys think?
Well, if we do give them to them, I definitely think we need to, like, be completely one hundred percent open to follow-up questions.
Yeah. And I, and I'm okay with that, and tech, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just want to know what the procedure is, the correct procedure, I know that. When we did the, um, principal interviews, they, they had the sheet, some of them had, had done their homework. And so I like to see homework now, but at the same time.
Well, yeah.
At the same time, and I like the question on here, the one question I like on here, have you learned about, what have you learned about our community and our school district? And they should have done some homework about our community and school district. Absolutely.
I'm okay with the follow-up, yeah.
So then, so then.
And then we'll have, I'll tell Zane to, um, I'll have him right away type up all the questions, and then. If we, if we're picking today, do you want me to do like we did last time, I put the names beside so we know?
Yeah. And I'm gonna talk about that, about how we're gonna do that, but so that, I just want that upfront, that we're gonna probably show.
Okay.
But I, I am okay with a follow-up question, like, if you answer a question, he says something, you can call up and ask, we've done that before. So I'm okay with that, okay?
Okay.
Are you, are we all good with that, is that kind of what we're gonna do, so we're all comfortable? Zane will type up the questions, and then they will get a preliminary list of what, of what to look for, okay?
And I assume that we're asking the initial questions, but, but our other.
Yeah, so what we're talking about.
That's what I was gonna ask too, is.
I, I'm, how are we gonna do that? Um, so, I look on this one, there were nineteen questions that we used, with nineteen, and if I look at your draft one, there was fifteen. Okay, so. Can me?
Well, let's just see what we get, I mean, I think we asked all the questions that we worked too, and if we have twenty-five, I don't.
Okay, okay.
And then do we decide, like, evidently we should let our community members ask one or two, or, like, like now, like today, let's say if we think. I like.
Let's say you pick four, and then you ask your community member.
Do I do two and they do two, or do I do three and do one, or, you know, that's something I want to know what we all feel like or whatever too, so that we know. Because then I'd like to give it to our community member then and say, hey, you know, so you know which ones you're asking or whatever, so.
I'm surprised.
So we can figure out as to.
And then Kelly and Mike, I'm gonna kind of let them do.
They can ask school questions.
I'm gonna let them ask what they, I'll go talk to them, but maybe like.
I mean, just give them that, that sheet.
Yeah, yeah, and John would kind of pick some.
Which side you want that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like.
And they'll maybe have some other, especially like for Kelly, he'll have principal questions to ask about, you know, things or whatever, so, I'm okay with that, that he can.
Okay, so then, then my next question is. The procedure, so we skipped around, what would be wrong with, like, me going first and doing three questions, and James going second doing three questions? Instead of going one, 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 so I would go first and do my four questions, only first because I'm board president, I was the one picking on me, okay? And I probably should be the one that introduces everybody, so, so.
And then one of yours could do.
And then one of, one of my guys could go, get him, get him on, and then. Then we go around and do the, or do you want to go me one, James one, back to me again, what do you think?
I don't, it doesn't make any difference.
So then let's go to make it more, to make it more flow better, let me go first and do three.
Okay.
Yeah, more of a.
And I'm, I'm not saying I have to pick my three questions first, you guys can pick your questions, but, but we'll just write down Wade, and then we'll go.
So you could do like introduction and then ask them to tell themselves.
Yeah, so you know, my first question is gonna have to be Charles, if you want to go back.
Well, or even, or, or if you want to, I'm okay if you even just have them do that, and then you start your questions, because that's something we all are gonna want to know. I mean, I wanted them to tell me about themselves, what are they, you know, what's some of their experience.
Well, you can add one extra question, that, that would first be the first one, that would be generic.
To me, it's not kind of not a question, it's something, I don't, I guess it's something.
It's no big deal to me if that's a question, but we can, we can see what happens here too.
Well, and, and I think just to, I think the first question should be tell us about yourself.
Right.
Not, not why you want to be superintendent, but what you.
No, no.
Yeah, no, no, I meant just tell us about.
Just about yourself.
Um, I like Dr. Jones' thing here, in two minutes, tell us about yourself.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Take a couple minutes to, yeah.
Yeah. So, if you want to mark, that is the first question to ask, is in two minutes, in about two minutes, tell about yourself.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um. That, that'll be, we'll put Wade by that one, right? Okay, okay, um, I don't have to be first on everything else, um. I get, on this, um. I definitely, this one on the superintendent, um, tell us some things you learned about your community and school, about ours in preparation for this interview. Or what are your biggest challenges as a school district, or what would be your biggest challenges as a new superintendent?
What age or what do you want to?
I'm on the superintendent interview question here, number three. I like that question, can I ask that one? Number three. Under, um. I think it was your, you said it was your graph file, you know.
This one?
What was your perception of our biggest challenge?
Okay, that one's number two then.
Yeah, yeah, so that's my, I, that's my second.
Okay.
Now I'm gonna let you guys.
And that flows well, so I like that.
Okay, my second question, yes. Okay?
I like the one with Lisa there, what, on number three, what experience have you had preparing and administering budgets at the district level?
Okay, so do you want that to be, okay, I'm gonna number these to give to him, I'm gonna make, should we decide if we're doing three or four, well, whatever, I'm gonna do like one, two, three, four for Wade. One, two, three, four for you, so that I know, so that he knows how to, what order to put them in, so you want that one then, James?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll put that one, and I'll.
And that was, what experience have you had?
Yeah, okay, so that's number one for James, okay.
And I think what we'll do is Spencer's not here, so we'll all pull up our, and then we'll go back, we'll go back and figure out which ones. Are missing that should be asked, and then we'll put him in his file. Because I think that's what I care.
What do you guys think about if I would ask, what are your strengths and weaknesses as an administrator? Like that question, not like that question?
I, I like that question.
Which one are you on?
That would be the single page one that says, um, draft one, it would be number two, so I'll pick that as one of mine. Who do we want to do that will ask something with budget questions, we gotta have some of those. Personnel.
Um, question number nine. Um, on the. Draft interview, um, the differences between your role and responsibilities as superintendent and those of the business manager in the school board.
I just start, I just started that Vanessa, just before you said it.
Okay, so that's one of them for Vanessa, okay.
So we did one for Spencer though?
I, I think, I think what, like I said, let's just pick our four, and then we'll go back and say, okay, what are we missing, what, what should we be asking that we.
Right, because I thought.
If you haven't said, and then.
Yeah, because I kind of thought maybe one of his could be something about when we, I see we've had a, we've asked it two different ways, something about. Your superintendent living in the district or being part of the community or whatever, that could be something that maybe we could give to him.
I like number thirteen on that same page as well.
Okay.
On draft one?
Yeah. And of course fifteen will be the odd one.
Right, yeah, that'll just be.
Which one?
Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, yeah.
Could that be something you could have?
I'll finish with that.
Yeah, and that doesn't have to be a question for you, just, that could be your, I'll put your name, and I'll just put down and.
We have the end, yeah.
Okay.
Kind of like number seven on that draft. Tell us what your approach to conflict management, how do you manage a situation? Where is staff members strongly distributed with decision making?
Okay, all right.
Isn't that number two for you?
Yep, yep, that's two for him. Trying to narrow mine down, trying to narrow mine down like a. You know, when you kind of compare, there's a lot of them that are kind of.
Oh, yeah.
So, which is, which, evidently we were on the same track each time.
Yeah, my first one was three years, same as four, yeah.
Well, I have. I have the questions from Max as well, where are those? I'm there a lot the same too, but.
There's a couple of ones here, um. I guess one of them, I think is a good one here, one is something about procedures for filling personnel vacancies, I mean, trying to see if there's one over here, if you'd like how it's worded better, or. Guess I'd like to ask a budget question, I think that's something we definitely.
Yeah, I have that marked, but.
Okay, well, go ahead, if you want.
No, I don't really want to do it, but I would, somebody's gotta do it.
Okay.
Tell us your experience about the number four, number four on draft one.
I was gonna say, I'm doing. I was just gonna say, do we want it that way, I don't think.
Number four on draft one, it says, tell us about your experience in developing a school bus district, school district budget, describe the process. You prioritize district needs and who, and who you ask for input, that's definitely a question that needs to be asked.
Right, yeah, I didn't see it really kind of here, so, okay, so that would be my number, that's my number two.
What? Number four on draft one?
Right, yeah, that would be my second one, okay. So I think we each.
Does that, that's kind of similar to my first one.
Which one's yours, James?
But it's worth a different, both budgets.
Oh, that's right, he, he did, my experience, he, you could ask that question, if you want to do whichever way you want to do it.
It almost sounds better, that, that question almost sounds better.
Yeah, why don't you pick, why don't you?
Okay, so we'll let James, that will be his, you want that one, can we remember one then, instead?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no problem, I.
Or I'm gonna just switch with you.
No, that's fine, you were doing a bunch.
I just think that's worth a little bit better.
Yeah, okay, so that will be his number one then, okay, so that helps, because I wanted to make sure that got asked. So. I was thinking, let's see, or something with personnel, and also should we talk, um, ask about, do you feel like, um, as you're open in special education and IEPs?
Yeah, I got that one marked too, someone needs to ask that one.
Okay, I can ask that one, that could be one, that can be my second one.
Or did you see that again?
That is on the superintendent, the one that with the names beside him, we used it for, probably number eight.
Number four numbers?
Yeah, yeah, your name's still on.
You asked the last one.
Yeah, I see that.
Is that your number two?
Yeah, that'd be my number two.
Which one, number eight?
Number eight on the roster or under the?
Oh.
Did it, this, yeah, the one that just says superintendent interview on top, that's all it says, number eight, okay, so, I think we each have. Wade, you only have one, so why don't you pick?
Yeah, all right, um.
Pick another one here, that way, well, each of us so far has two.
Can I, can I change a little bit of the wording behind my number two?
Okay, okay, yeah, what would you like?
Like to say, what steps will you take to begin to develop relationships of trust?
Okay, what, what steps do you take to begin to develop the relationships?
Of trust and respect.
Okay, of the trust and respect of a man, okay, so, of the trust, okay.
And then add parents also to that, yes.
Okay, we'll do students, then I can have them add parents, and then add community, okay? All right. Okay. I think we need to add something about, um. Like number six on that one, that just says superintendent interview on top, or talks about filling personnel vacancies. You know, we could probably do that, and then maybe throw in like a follow-up of like a retention, what, what do you think of that, or? Do you find a better one someplace?
Just number six is a.
It would be, yeah, it would be number six on that one that says superintendent interview on top. If I had that as a follow-up, I could throw in a retention or something. But if you have, someone wants some different wording or whatever.
You want, but, you want me to leave number three?
Sure, sure.
Okay, which one did you?
Okay, is this a superintendent interview on top, that two-page one that was?
Yeah, the one we do.
That would be number six.
You're gonna do that one?
Yes. And then I, my follow-up will be something maybe about, uh, retention.
Great.
And if you guys. You know, I'll have Zane come up with a good, uh, follow-up, I'll try to figure something for a retention question, that will be my follow-up thing or whatever, so. Okay, so I have three. So you guys still each have two, Wade has three, and Spencer has four.
How many do I have?
You only have.
One?
Yeah, you only have one so far. Well. Do you want us to use this tell us about yourself as a question, or, I, I, I think that should just be an automatic given.
We'll see, yeah, we'll see.
That should just be a given thing after you do introduction, and then you could still come up with four questions if you want.
We'll see, we'll see.
Because I feel like that's just something that.
So we haven't really asked about the leadership style, right?
No.
No.
So, I, I would probably follow out as a question, is tell us about your leadership style, that was, that's under, um, number two, wonder what we did last year.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, number twelve on the draft.
Okay.
I'm interested in that, but this is from a Max one, I also would like to put on there somehow. Um, tell us about community events you have participated in, and then go into.
Right. Or you could ask the, or you could ask the question, and that could be your follow-up, or however you want to do it, or if you want that first, and.
Sure.
I mean, like I said, I know follow-ups are kind of off of our, top of our head, but.
Right.
You.
Yeah.
You just want to tell me how you want to ask that question, so that way I get this.
So I'd start out with tell us about the community events you have participated.
Okay. Okay.
And then.
Okay, that will be first, okay.
And then what is your role in the community? We could just leave at that.
Okay. Okay, so I have tell us about the event, tell us about the community events you have been, you have participated in, and then you will go on with what is your role in the community. Okay, got it.
There's a lot more questions, might could be a couple questions.
Well, if you do other follow-ups, that's.
Right.
That's yours.
Question thirteen on the last one here, would you consider to be your major strengths and weaknesses as an administrator?
Actually, I already asked that, but what, was that part of the?
Oh, that was my first one, yeah.
Yeah.
Three, two on the draft.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
You could follow that up too, with what is your weaknesses too.
Well, that's what it says, what are your strengths and weaknesses?
Okay, okay, okay.
And then follow-ups can certainly be a lot of that as well.
Right.
Right, and, and like follow-ups, doesn't have to just, I only have to do follow-up, or can it be anybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, I was just double checking.
Include my community. Or, or, or five people on the table.
And on the, they have to be on the table.
Right, yeah, or, or Mike, or Kelly, or.
Right, yeah. Okay, you have the conflict manager.
But how would you approach your first year superintendent?
Yeah, that's a good question, I have that marked, why, do you want to ask that? I, that's a, how, I would say, how would you approach your superintendent at Harvey High School, at Harvey, at Harvey Park?
Harvey, yeah.
Number five, I don't think that's on.
It's five on last year's.
Okay, so that would be your third one, yeah, James's third one, okay. Do you have another one you're looking at, Wade? Do you have another one you're looking at, Wade?
Kinda like, what's your biggest mistake, have you made professionally and personally, but someone, can you, can you answer, like personally or not?
You can ask that. We've asked that before.
Yeah, we've asked that.
Kinda makes them be human.
Oh, there we go, number sixteen.
And we all make mistakes, so tell me you're not gonna make mistakes.
Okay.
Should you ask that to him?
I don't.
Sixteen?
So that's four.
So James, you have your four?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see, yes.
Okay.
So Vanessa, before, you've got three, right?
I have three, yeah.
Okay, so I have a question for you, can you go to the, um. The one we did last time?
Mm-hmm.
And go to the, the question that you asked, at number eighteen.
Okay.
I think that's a tremendous question, have you?
But it's.
Have you covered that?
It's kind of.
Have you covered that, has that been covered?
James, that's his one, tell us your approach to conflict management, he took, on draft one, he does that one, he, it's number seven. So, yeah, so that one, so conflict has kind of been.
Could he add that part about, could he add that part about how do you manage situations where a staff member disagrees or agrees?
I think, um. Yeah, it says, tell us your approach to conflict management, how do you manage a situation where staff members strongly disagree with the decision? I know that some of them are, they're kind of almost alike between the two.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted that covered.
Yes.
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah.
So, okay, but that's what that one says, that's not what the one we have marked says.
Oh, he took number seven under draft one. Okay, and which?
It's pretty much the same thing.
Number seven, and then, this one is eighteen.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same.
I know, there's just so many of them.
And I just kinda, I just wanted that covered, I, I did.
Yeah.
I thought about, I think Galsambe Legendary said something about that, maybe we could ask some questions about, since we have like our goals at Gardwell, so if we're. Really trying to say like our goals are to improve our math reading and choice rate. Could I ask something about if they would have some examples of some things that they maybe have done at some of their other districts, as to. I don't know how I word that, I, I mean. Yeah. I guess, oh, she's got some here. Can you share some examples of how you have strategically increased reading achievement, or you know, we could say, or math, or choice ready? You know, or something, maybe I could do something along that line. But we could say that that's something we have picked to. Work on. Okay, that will be, that'll be my fourth one, that.
Good.
I'll come up with a question here. I wouldn't give that one to our, to my community person, oh, and by the way, I had to change it to Stan Book, so, so you all know.
Oh, nice. And I did lock in Michael there too.
Oh, okay.
Can't ask him if he's a citizen or not, he's.
Nope, you can't ask that.
Oh, he must have been looking at the, at the staff questions.
Which to me is. Propoferous.
Well, I think, I suppose the thing is, is if they have their teaching license. That would, that's what they check all that, you know, they check the background checks, they check to see if yours is, you know, that's all checked in the back.
Yeah, you say, well, not to be a citizen, but at least be legally here, I mean, that's.
Right, so they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get their teacher administration license if they weren't, I mean, that's what's. I don't know what they call it in other states, but like for our D P I, I mean, that's what they should be checking before they give out a license.
Actually, I'm not sure that they do.
Well, they should be. If not, I'd be a little disappointed.
I'm not sure that they do.
Okay, so I have.
We know all three of these are, so some.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I have my four.
James has got his four.
Yeah.
I have a question for Spencer, I think, we, uh.
Sure.
Go with number five on the draft, the one about, you know, appreciate about your. For standpoint making and utilizing technology, would consider yourself tech savvy, I think that has to be a good question, do you think?
Sure.
And we'll give that one to Spencer, because that's kind of his forte, and he can, and he can portray off of that.
Sure. Yeah.
Number six kind of plays into what you were talking about as well, collect. Put your question with.
Oh, okay, true, so I'll come up with. I'll label that one with my number four, and I'll figure out, I'll figure out a question and probably a follow-up, maybe if I put two things, I should maybe be able to come up with that subject.
Okay, then, um. On the superintendent one that we did last time.
Okay.
Number four, write yourself as a listener, explain, and then go to the next page, what communication approaches are most effective for you? Have we talked about the communication approach yet?
Which number are you on?
Number, I'm putting four and twelve together.
Are you asking something about?
Four and twelve together on the one that, um. Doctor. Made last time. Write yourself as a listener, or, um, the second question is, what communication approaches are most effective, how do you communicate, how do you communicate delegation, have we talked about any of them?
I don't think we have.
I know, I'm just going back and looking too. Okay, so, so maybe somehow, do you wanna put like four and?
Twelve.
Twelve, like one could be your question, and one your follow-up.
And that would give it to Spencer.
Oh, okay, Spencer, okay. Alright, I will label both as his number two, and. And kinda make one question, and then the other one could be like the follow-up.
And then on, um. Um, on this draft page. There's a superintendent interview question, draft page question number, um. Twenty-one. How do you encourage good teaching?
Is that something you wanna do?
I guess I would do that, that's a good question, isn't it?
Yeah.
And I would put that as my number three. How do you encourage good teaching? Question twenty-one. Being a teacher, I guess that's.
Damn, this little budget starts crazy. Okay, so I have. I tick, oh yeah, there you go, one, two, yeah, that's your number three, yeah, okay. So we would need two more for Spencer, one for you, and one for Vanessa, yeah.
How about, what are your personal and professional goals, and how do these goals relate to our district?
Okay, where's, which ones is that on?
It's on the max questions.
Oh, okay, like is that on, I like that. Yeah, I like that, yeah, it's a good question.
What are your personal and professional goals? Goals?
And how do they relate to our district?
Okay, first part is a question, or is a statement, that he's, and then the second one, you wanna ask the question, right? Or do you want it all in one big sentence?
I guess there'd be kind of both questions.
Okay, true, yeah, but your personal professional goals, okay, I'll put that, or you can just kinda do it together, and.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that's all. Type it, okay, so that's Vanessa's number four. So now we gotta pick two more for Spencer.
Okay, so what have we done about the budget so far? Okay, let's go to question number eight, under, um, superintendent interview question bank.
Well, I was right about that one.
But that was the I E P one, I did number eight on.
On the stu, on the, on this one?
No.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's a fun absolute one.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
Let's have Spencer do that one. Audio access facility needs prioritized, and he's on, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that will be his number three. We haven't asked one, something about relationships with the board, have we?
No.
No, and that should be one, so maybe that could be one, we could get another one to give to Spencer.
And what were you have that, where are you seeing?
Um, I thought I've seen a couple of, um. Better look here again now.
Yeah, I'll make number thirty-nine, pick a number thirty-nine on that bank.
Yeah, cuz that whole section is board relations, yeah.
Same as number eleven on the draft.
Yeah.
Okay, did we do that?
No.
Well, I think we should do that one.
Oh, okay.
Either one, either thirty-nine or eleven.
Yes.
It's exactly, yeah, it's, it's the exact same thing, so, okay.
You give that to Spencer too, then he's got his four.
So that's his number four, okay. Okay. Alright. And then, like I said, I feel like. When you just ask him to tell about yourself, I think that should just be a question, not be like one of yours, because that's something that has to be asked.
Okay, well then, if I can ask one more, then I will ask the same one that I asked.
And then same thing, I think at the end, when you say you have any questions for us, that's not, shouldn't.
Well, if you go to number seven on the questions we asked last time, I think that's a big part of our school history.
Extra curriculars?
Yeah, so I will ask that.
Okay.
Being, I can tie it in how I was an extra curriculum instructor.
You also asked that one last time.
Yeah, I asked the last time too.
Okay, so.
So that's why I did, cuz it's dear to me, so.
Yeah.
So has everybody got four?
Should be, I'll count, I'll count to see if I have four, you guys count yours, I'm pretty sure, should I have one? Yeah, I think I have twenty of them on, on here.
That'd be right.
Should be.
Is that, is that question one, tell us about yourself?
What is that, here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
I'll just.
Or do I do it? Okay, so I have. Okay, wait, one, three, here's your two, and here's your. Four. One, two, three. Oh, I know why, we put number four and twelve together, and I counted them separately, but yeah, I just see my notes, so yeah, I have twenty, so that would be right, there'd be five of us, and we each have four picked, yeah.
And you didn't count to.
No, I didn't count, I didn't count, I didn't count tell us about yourself, and I didn't count, do you have any questions for us? No.
That should be, a twenty question is enough.
Yeah.
And if Mike and them asked, that's, that's great.
Right, then if we have a few follow-ups in there, I mean, it's, that's, cuz I think I remember at one time, Alexa from school, where I kinda said. You wanna kinda keep it at twenty or less, because you know there's gonna be follow-ups, and, you know, and it'd be like thirty of them then.
Before I go on to my next item, I wanna talk about, are you ever good with questions?
So then. Well, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm good with questions, I'm just asking.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna.
Maybe that's what you're gonna ask.
I, I wanna go through the, the schedule.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk about the schedule, how, how this is gonna play out. Okay, so what, before I do that, we're all good with questions?
So.
And you're going to, okay, so the computer.
So what are, what are we gonna do, are we going to do two and two to our community, what do we want?
I think that's up to each of us, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so, I don't think it matters. I don't think it matters, I don't think it matters.
So.
But here's my thing, though.
But then I need to tell.
But do it, do it, do it the same way, all three. Do it the same way, all three, so if you're gonna, you know what I'm saying, so it's possessed to the same, that's my only, be consistent.
Yeah.
But then they'll have. Right, you'd have to let me know then.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, if you put down Wade, I'll sit down with, with my guy and say, which one do you want?
Oh, okay, that's all I was wondering, okay, so, I'll just make sure he just labels our names, and then it's up to us to, okay, that's fine, as long as your people know. And then that will stay, okay, that's, I have no problem with that.
Now, once this, once this is typed up, I'll go over and talk to Mike and, and, you know, and see how they wanna fit into this, and see how, how they think they can fit into this.
Right, like I said, I think it'd be great if they asked their school questions, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, that's fine, I'll just have only labeled four for each of us, and it's up to us to talk to our community member, I'm fine.
Are we good? Okay, all good, and everybody's got their community locker clock in, and give them their schedules to them?
Yep.
Okay, alright, okay, so let's cut, let's talk about the term, the, um, let's talk about the, um, schedule, we'll start with the term, do you have someone lined up, right?
Uh, Jason Schneider said he could.
Okay.
And I told him, just keep it like twenty minutes or so.
Okay, so that's lined up, and then we go to the two-thirty students, the reason why this was changed. Was Kelly called me and didn't think it was gonna work in the library with her, with her time, so that's why you wanted to put it here. I have talked to Wolf Kelly, and, um, Mrs. Armstrong, and Mrs. Doctor, who the students would be. And it's, I'm leaving it up to them, we talked student council, but Mrs. Armstrong was being more heavy towards, um, honor society. So I said, doesn't matter, me, you pick the students that you think represent your school, and, um, the teachers, and so they will bring them, and. Um, Kelly, I think is gonna bring them over on Monday, Mrs. Armstrong is gone on Southern Bridge that day, and, uh, I think she's gonna bring them over the other two days, but.
So it's all gonna be here now?
Just the students and the community, because they didn't want, if the library wasn't open.
Oh.
But at four o'clock, at four o'clock, you, you got a second schedule, Vanessa, did you see your?
I thought he sent them out, yeah.
You sent the second one out, you wanted to copy the mine?
Have you written that?
No, I have not written that.
Okay, cuz I know I do have it in the office, I think.
So the staff is gonna be.
A staff is over in the library, and so, and then everything else will be in the library. The other two are gonna have to be here, because Kelly didn't want to give up the library, and they had too many things going on over there, so whatever. And they'll can bring the students here. I hope this is full of, of, um. Community members, but.
Yeah, which whether the last.
Yeah.
I think it will be though, I, I mean, I don't know about full, but I think that it'll be better than previous.
And yesterday. I'll give you an extra, or to give to your community person in case, um, I know I. If you wanna put two over there on Spencer's. They did, they and Teresa put it in the newspaper, so it'll be in the newspaper, the schedule on Saturday, and Dr. Lupin's posted on the Facebook, so it's on there. Well, fingers here. Try that, that way you won't give one to weird.
Okay.
So it should be advertised, you know, kind of all over and stuff like that, so.
So then go back to this again then, um, so students in the community, so before, when the community did it. Uh, like when, um, you guys did it, when you hired Mitch. Who facilitated that?
It was in the library, so.
I, we had one person in there, I can't remember if Mitch, I know with Dr. Lupin's, we had Louisa in there, first time, I don't, no, I think Alexis did. The school, cuz we had her, she did, and it was just so, they don't ask any questions during any of these, but someone sat there to make sure. Like of students that they, you know, like, they were, maybe goofing off, or.
I'm not too worried about students, cuz I think one of the advisors is gonna follow.
Yes, yes, no, but I mean, that was the reason why, and then also to make sure that people didn't ask any like wrong questions, or.
So someone needs to sit in those, those. We didn't hire anybody, so I mean.
I, I, I can, but only if you guys say it's okay, and I said, I would literally sit back, I mean, cuz I don't plan to say or ask anything unless they want me to.
I just think.
Community, I could just introduce.
Yeah, you need to introduce.
But I will ask, I will not say nothing, cause that's not my time.
Yeah, and I think we can.
But it's totally up to you guys.
I'd be fine with that.
I, I, and maybe it could be, and like you said, I, I'm serving on Tuesday, it's Sunday, but maybe Wednesday or Thursday I could serve in too, so.
Go ahead, and then, and if, and if you would be doing that, I will leave the building.
Yeah, I think it only can be one of us here.
No, that's what I mean, I, I, I go on.
Like, one of us can be here.
If you wanna take two of these.
Alright, are we all good with that, how we're gonna handle that?
Oh, I didn't do you, okay, couldn't remember anymore.
Okay.
Maybe it's my.
Alright, so then, um, at four o'clock, the staff, the same thing, there should be one person in there just to introduce him.
And that will be over in the library.
And I'll be over the library, and then, and then just sit back and be careful, watch that they don't ask any questions, and then of course the board committee for five, and then we have the meal, that's set at home come tomorrow, right?
Yep, she, she approved each night, we can be in the back room, so it's a.
Yeah, that's why I picked that, because it was the back room, and it's private, so, um, and then seven thirty, come back for a brief debriefing if that's possible, okay? Any questions on the schedule? Any questions on the schedule? Okay, any questions on, anything else that's strictly related to the superintendent, I can't talk about anything else, but anything else that you have that's a question of, of, is gonna work.
So these names are all public now?
They're all public, yeah.
Yep.
The names are public too?
I see they posted it.
Those are out too, so we have no overlap, believe it or not, that will be away.
We could have easily had overlap.
Yeah, I know, I am surprised.
In the interview?
Nope.
Nope, 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 and then, and the one that we, um, the one that we all had.
I did introduce it.
The one that we all had high and scratched, they, they're interviewing, so. So whatever, we're not gonna talk about that.
Well, and, and who else, yes.
So, Clyde, you have, uh, did he make the copies or the?
Oh, yes he did, yes, Zane made copies.
Right, read that, yep.
Well, I did that.
I didn't remember.
Yep, yep, I had that some, yes.
I can ask a question?
I guess so.
Um, on this schedule, what can the mun, the community attend through here? Is it only the three o'clock?
Community can, it's a good question, um.
The three to four, and then they can sit.
Come back for the interview.
Interview, they have.
Yeah, yeah, they can sit.
At five?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you can, that'll be in the library, it'll be just be like, for us, it'll be like a special meeting, so anybody can sit out there and watch and listen.
Two and four should just be students and staff, correct?
Well, students, yeah, because we can't have any.
Yes, students, students have any.
With students, we can't have any.
Any kind of, any kind of camera or anything with kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the only thing I'm worried about, but that, they need the.
Yeah, cause otherwise we'd have to get permission.
Yep, yep. Okay, any other thing else?
But on, on seven thirty then, on the debriefing, can the community?
That's open also.
That's open.
That is open, so, three, five, and seven thirty?
Yep.
And it, and it could, the time would vary a little, you know, so that you know, surprise.
Anytime.
Yep, anytime of all of us, and that's why we're making sure that there's only one of us present.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to see who is. Okay, yeah, cause then that way, I'll, after Zane types up his questions, then I'll give that all to Spencer today.
And then, and then you should send him to.
Does he have his?
Okay.
Oh, so this one must be mine, right, everybody's got theirs, okay.
And then you should send them to the candidates.
Oh, right, the questions, yeah, I better make, yeah. I'll have to do that.
So, I got questions about at what point to do, is, is this, well, obviously none of us are gonna be doing too much calling, but is this time between now and Tuesday, when we like start digging in?
Yeah, and I.
I think we could, and I think.
And it could, and at the same time, remember, on Thursday, we're in cover making decisions, we don't have to make a decision on Thursday.
Right, but that's why I'm asking, because if there's a possibility of making a decision on Thursday, then we need to do some digging before then.
Right, that is your, that is your prerogative.
I, I think anytime we know along that we.
That is your prerogative.
And, cause I thought I would, I thought as long as that's okay, I was planning to do that, you know.
Cause the, the name, see, the, these names are public now, so, we can talk about and share them, the, the other, um, eighth that interviewed for this job are not public, so we can be talking about the other eighth that interviewed for this job. One of them could be brought back in.
Right.
Then they will, but at this point, those eight names cannot be talked about. Okay, everybody agree with that?
Yep, right.
Okay. Alright, if there's nothing else that's strictly related to superintendent, um, discussion, that related to superintendent, I would, um, we don't, I would, um.
It's a special, so do you have to, you need a motion to.
I don't need a motion to adjourn that special meeting, because there's nothing else I can talk about, but if you wanna make feel better, you can.
No, 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 I, that's, I, no, I'm just writing it down.
I know, I know I don't, cause I know my policy pretty well, but.
Okay, wait, can I know, I'm just making sure if I had, okay, we've got the.
Yep, make sure you have, we've got everything covered.
We've got these, we've got the questions, I'll have him type them, I think probably what I'll do before, he sends them to the candidates, should I send them out to like just us five first of all?
Yeah. Vanessa, you're gonna be out home to him one day, but you still.
Right, but, but I mean, she could just look up and that way, just do something you wanted, and, and if it's just a little bit of wording, you can ask it however a person wants to, I mean, I, the question is, cause he types it one way, doesn't, you know, if you decide you wanna turn some words around, I mean, that's okay.
As long as you're consistent with being all three candidates.
Well, right, and as long as we have the same topic or something.
So I do have another question. The names are public, are these?
I think they are.
But I think we have to ask for them.
They have to be requested as.
You have to come and ask for them, I, I think you can do, but if they came in here and asked for them, I think we can give them to them.
Yeah, we can give copies.
Yep.
We can, we can give copies to our person, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see problem with that.
Yeah, because I think once you pick a, from what I understood, when I was trying to read through search code and things in school.
So what, what, what we were concerned about was, I was told that their applications were public, but their resumes were, the references were not.
But.
We actually checked that, and the references are public.
Anything that's included in their whole, whatever they sample, like, one of them might be two pages and the next one is like ten or twelve, yeah, but they would have to be requested over records, and I think that we would prefer to do them paper instead of digital, because then they would go to five thousand people, I mean, however you give them to your.
Right.
Okay, we all good?
I never even thought I should, I should've had to make two of each to, to give to your community. I could quick make, if you want me to, to make the copies here, somebody want a second set? I mean, since he's, they aren't stapled, so I could quick run it through and make, you know, like all this, I'll make five of them.
Can I, can I adjourn the meeting in the process?
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay, well, you have a motion, or can I just adjourn?
You can go ahead.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, that's the second, remember, move second, we adjourn, and, uh, thank you all for coming, the, uh, special meeting, um, to do superintendent questions is adjourned at seven fifty-five.
Okay, I'll quick make these for you guys, I'll make five of them for you.
And I told Zane seven thirty, he said, he typed in seven minutes, I was gonna give you an extra half an hour for it, sorry.
Jeez.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and it's like, I, I don't know about extra half an hour, I mean, I get up at five thirty, so it doesn't matter to me, but.
I get up, I set my alarm ten minutes before I have to get up, but I don't get up any earlier than I figure I have to get up to get here in this time.
So what time are you leaving?
I think we're gonna leave right after school.
How many hours can you do that in?
It's like twelve, basically, and it says ten, but it's not that, and it's.
So you're gonna go out and do the night sentence?
No, we're not, we did that, when we went to December, and that was horrible.
Yeah, but cause your whole pressure.
Yeah, it was, it was awful, so, um, we're gonna go to Fargo, for sure, probably go to St. Fargo, and then,
Oh, my.
Maybe power on the Berkels, maybe stay at Fargo. Not sure, or working at somewhere.
Which one are?
Everybody.
You got all your community members here.
Larry's actually renting a vehicle, so that her family and Bethany and Tommy are all gonna travel together.
You're gonna pick up Brad?
Yeah.
I'm so sad that he missed his own thing, but.
I, oh.
But they didn't really have a choice, and then I just, they called and pulled them off the race, so.
Yeah.
It's so hard to reschedule, and I just, like, that's the one thing, as a state officer, that you look forward to is going back to your home town, that's too bad.
Yeah, it was unfortunate.
But, you know, it's not worth risking driving in that, cause it was worse that way, so, what's lying wrong here?
I mean, he certainly could've made it, but.
And then he would've get out in his head.
But I don't know how long it would've taken, you know? And yeah, he had a test the next day.
Were you part of the decision after him to come, or did he invite him here?
We talked, but, yeah, he's like, you know, cause he asked how, how it was, and when we talked, it was fairly early, and I'm like, you got a little bit of time to decide.
Yeah, he had to be back the next day if he had to.
That, that was definitely a factor.
Yeah.
And, and plus, he said, well, Daniel said I should've come on it.
I think Dan, I think what Daniel told me was he wasn't pretty very strong. He said, you make the decision, I don't think he told not to come. What Daniel told me, Anna said, I just told him, please, just, he was your brother, you know, I don't want you, they were concerned about safety, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, and Brian, I think the family, possibly the whole family, is coming for his retiring address.
Whoa!
Because the Brian leaves, unfortunately, Brian and Matt are leaving before my nephew's ordination, which is on that Saturday. Sad. But, I don't know how we're gonna make that, it's possible, I'm not gonna get to the ordination, because Daniel's a brother. So Daniel is president, so if somebody has to stay home, it would be me, cause always bloody. Run the traitor, unless I'm not, keeps my bloody, but we'll see, I was thinking we're gonna hardly bring him holding, pretty much, uh, they're probably. They were basically, um, I think by the Saturday is after they, Sunday eleven or something.
I would recommend this was the first full weekend field, so.
I have another question, you were saying for open records, we can request the resumes and?
I believe so.
So, yeah, of the three, of the three candidates, so I can ask that now and possibly get a copy?
His retiring address is attached on the ordination, it's a separate. Pretty wicked wild, little bit. Although that week is, this was the week I took my dark skin, so it's definitely like way down by that time, but. We, uh, we got a call at the county fair a few years ago, actually, we got a call at county fair several years ago, and we rated eight times. It doesn't make sense, it's a lot more.
Yeah, either the, uh.
It's, it's bad. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure if my personality would fix, would've worked with it, it was.
He just didn't think.
Exactly.
Well, we had one, uh, we continue to have three, I believe, three coppers.
Yeah.
Three cells, and one cell was not working for the guy in the rugby. I think he was getting really, almost clear, maybe it wasn't quite clear, but it was probably fifteen percent at least, or something was off in one cell.
Right.
And I don't know why he didn't pass it, but.
When it was, I think he was catch that, if it was.
Yeah, especially if you load it into tenders, you know, like, gotta escape that, scale, usually they're pretty close or not.
I suppose if you're putting a hundred units in a family, you're probably not gonna realize it, but they're here, but.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, there's a lot of dollars.
That would get ugly really bad.
Yes.
I would be sick to myself.
And I think he had a, a box of corn that got returned to him, and they clipped the tops, but he didn't take any out, and then they wouldn't give him credit for the return.
Uh, yeah.
But then they didn't give him the corn, you know, at least he, it's like, well, at least get the box of corn back.
Exactly.
That would, that would.
Yeah, we told our, we told our people, uh, no, because we had a couple circumstances where, um, the corn was not that great, and for, for a few years, we're like, no, we're opening every box lucky, and it's because we were, we were not happy.
Just the quality of the.
It was old corn, and it was kinda broke out, but.
Making sure I had my, I heard that here, right? Here's one for Spencer, if you wanna have a little, that, that we should each have. And then Clint, we're asking for open records. Oh, okay, sure.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, everybody have a great, yeah, we'll see you all on Tuesday.
Can you just let me know next week what things you wanna do, so then?
Yeah, 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 we'll talk.
It's a little hard to believe I'm going all the way down to Kansas, doing Easter weekend, and then be back in the two days.
To do it.
It's a little bit like that, like it's looking for an eye for now, which it is, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just two days with my baby.
What we wanna do for our niece and grandpa?
At least, at least it's two days, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with Texas, we get it, so.
Yes.
Yeah, big part of me, I was happy, Kelly went down to Des Moines, I was today, and I was gonna watch the boys wrestle in summer, and, uh, I cancelled the last one.
So what we wanted to be able to say to him is, well, Chris, him and.
Other, other quarters, quarters that we did have, and then Kayla and Peter on the, they'll, they'll put a team together.
That's a traveling, or whatever I call it.
It's a full, full team in Iowa, so they wrestle Wisconsin, Iowa, New York.
So it's a full like eleven club, I mean, all weights then?
Yep, yep. Full weights.
When do they get back?
I guess it's after.
I think Saturday morning they'll, might have a match or two, hopefully, they'll get, get them back.
What part of Iowa is this?
Illinois.
Well, that's, that's like crime lords in the cities.
That's like Miami.
Yeah?
I went down there last year, I was, this is the second year, so, I figured Kelly's gonna be there, I can watch it on TV too.
Okay.
How old are these kids?
Uh, sophomores?
So there, there is a, I think they call them juniors, or, or junior senior, I think they might take a team of junior senior.
I didn't follow up that, sorry, you talked about all the different wrestling stuff, I get all confused.
But they're on a freshman team.
Cool.
After us, but there's like, Iowa might have four teams, Wisconsin.
The kid?
Yeah. Down with fifth, third, and third.
Great kid.
Yeah. Christian applied to last year, but he's had a freshman. And one kid he lost to was Mark, and the other kid he lost to was last match, he was, he lost, he beat that kid, he's important. By a factor, apparently, he doesn't have any other, yeah, so. Lot of wrestling.
Lot of wrestling, especially when they're not in shape, they're, they're kind of all the same.
And then some kind of super sometimes.
Perfect.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Hello.
Yeah, everybody, everybody. Are you seeing? I drove off, yeah, okay. No, I drove, I drove, like, I know, it's, it's not a Monday, it's my wife, it's, it's a great, I don't see much for it, no.
Theo, Vanessa, happy Easter.
Alright, I'll see you then.
Warm and ready to go. I, I, maybe I have a dime, and then I can give it back to him, and then he comes in, he can give me my dime back, you know what I mean, just to make it easier.
Well, if, if I can, um.
Cause I don't wanna go back there.
I have another problem.
Oh, okay.
Well, I've got two sixty. Well, I deal with camp.
Right, but I don't have, I don't keep a lot of change, I don't carry it, yeah, I mean, my purse, I gave it to my husband, and he loses it, I have to go buy it. I'm just saying, I just personally don't carry a lot of gear. Oh, perfect, then it looks like it's changed, okay, awesome, yeah, yeah, there you go, took off, okay. Thank you very much, happy Easter to you too, yes.